Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I wanna welcome everybody. We'll start out with a prayer from Steve Ayers from Lifeline Connect Church.
Let's pray. Lord, I thank you upward today and thank you for our occasion here tonight. And, Lord, I pray that you continue to protect our village. Lord, I pray that we continue to protect the men and women that serve our village. Lord, I pray that you just light the path forward for each and every one of us. And, Lord, I pray and I know that you'll give us comfort and care. Lord, we just thank you and we praise you. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Barth.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Klepper.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Ridgeway.
Here.
Okay, we have to amend the agenda. There's a couple changes that came in. One of them was an ordinance. What was the other one, Cheryl?
Resolution twenty.
Okay, so I need a motion to amend the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Klepper.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, great night, we've got a lot of visitors here. Recognition of police officers Shane Bostick and Jason Tate. And the chief's gonna kinda give everybody history of what happened, so everybody knows. Chief, go ahead and...
So, on the evening of August fifth, two thousand twenty-one, there was a structural fire reported at three seventeen South Main Street in Hicksville here. Officer Shane Bostick and Officer Jason Tate, one of the working units at the time, they responded immediately to the scene. Upon arrival, they were being assisted by the neighbors at the time, I believe Mr. and Mrs. Koenig. And Mr. Koenig could not get inside the house. The officer was forced entry into the house as the door, they couldn't get the door open. The house was filled with smoke and exceptional heat at the time. And they found our victim inside the house, Jeff Pepper, laying on the floor. They were able to drag Mr. Pepper out to safety outside where the Hicksville EMS crew took over life-saving efforts with him. He was transported to Community Memorial Hospital. He had significant burns on his body and arms. I believe he is still listed as critical but stable at this time. He's got a long recovery ahead of him. I would like to recognize Officer Bostick and Officer Tate for their actions. They went above and beyond. And they will be receiving a life-saving award in the future from us. So, I'll let them say anything they wanna say.
Yeah, this is the day and age, there's so much negativity, police officers. So, we have two officers in our small village stepped up the plate and saved a man's life. So, I wanna commend both of you as officers, job well done. And I'm glad to see your families are here to support you and fellow officers are here too. So, congratulations.
You're doing pictures now?
Yeah.
I don't care.
Yep.
And then I wanna recognize that night, it was eleven o'clock at night. Doc went and talked to Mike, so he left his house and went in action. The chief went down to the hospital and to make sure the thing was going well. So, I wanna commend you two guys also, step beyond, so. Go around to the table, guys. But, job well done.
Thank you.
You're burning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
If I could say something real quick, Mayor.
Yeah.
Composure, right? The neighbors, the police officers, the fire department, the EMS. I've talked to Scott, I've talked to, you know, you guys, everybody. You guys have done such a tremendous job. You always have. Anytime that I've ever seen you in action, got to ride with Shane one day. It's not something you wanna see happen to a family member, a friend, anything like this. I can't say enough about our departments all across the board. We have a phenomenal town, we have a phenomenal EMS, fire, police. Anytime I've ever seen you guys in action, top-notch, I mean, above and beyond. Dealing with family members, like I said, and being that close to me, it's amazing. From my heart, from my family.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Job well done.
You can take a picture?
I don't need a picture. About the two officers with the chief, I don't need to be on the picture.
The only shot I got of being something's his.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You guys wanna introduce your family members?
Sure.
There's a bunch of 'em here.
This is my mother, Michelle.
Okay.
This is my wife, Allison.
Yeah.
And over there is my father, Chris.
Okay.
You got a good son there.
This is my mother, Debbie. My father is out in the hallway with my youngest son, Josh. My fiancee, Laura, and her oldest, my stepson, Nick.
Okay, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
I'm real proud.
My brother back here.
Oh, you forgot your brother?
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, a little way to start the meeting, this is great.
Yes.
Okay, representatives from the Energy Optimizer USA, are they here?
Yes, she is.
Hello.
Okay, you wanna up the podium, please, and kinda...
What an awesome thing to witness. Thanks for having me here tonight. I just wanted to introduce myself, introduce my company, and answer any questions that you guys have. Back in the spring, Kent Miller reached out to Energy Optimizers to do an energy audit about, at the sewer plant, because I guess the sewer plant is the largest energy user in the city. So, how can we reduce the utility spend there, be more efficient there? And then what is the applicability of renewables? Like, is solar feasible and does it make sense in terms of a business case? Energy Optimizers is an energy company, so that's, that is what we do. We've been in business since two thousand nine. I just started with the company in March. So, if there's any questions that I can't answer, I will get back to you. But I've been in the energy business for about eight years now. I was previously with another company where I, my main focus was local government, water and wastewater. And at Energy Optimizers, they've been doing energy service projects primarily for schools. We're based out of Dayton, and they've done a ton of business in schools in Ohio, looking at like HVAC, lighting, controls, anything that uses or loses energy, basically. Building, complete building retrofits. And they brought me on to sort of expand that into the local government space in Ohio, especially the underserved, like smaller villages, townships, that the larger ESCOs aren't really focusing on. So, this project is to do an audit of the sewer plant, looking at the operational savings and the energy savings of the equipment that's used there. So, you can, there's a couple different ways to go about this, but using a company like Energy Optimizers is a smart thing to do, because you can, you know, you have engineers that are gonna look at it from a engineering, a functional standpoint, and that's gonna be an expensive route to go. You can go like an EPA route, they're gonna look at it from an environmental perspective. We're gonna look at it from an environmental perspective, an engineering, is it functional perspective, and an energy perspective, like a business case perspective. And that's that piece that you're not gonna get with the other two sort of avenues. So, when we, when we look at it, we're gonna come to you with a business case for a project. So, you'll, you'll be able to see the different improvement measures that we recommend, what the cost of those are, and what the payback is, what the savings is. So, then you can rank them, prioritize them, based on what makes sense. You can also look at, like a long-term capital plan. So, you now, now you know the age of your equipment, you know, when it's gonna fail. And so, you're able to make a strategic, take a strategic approach on retrofitting things within the water, wastewater treatment plant, the sewer plant. When we met the last time, we also, you know, we sort of expanded it to look at all the buildings. So, we're gonna look at lighting, HVAC, and controls at all the, all the village buildings. We actually already did the lighting portion, which is at no cost. But when you bring in, when you start looking at the sewer plant, that's where the cost comes in. You know, we, we can't do that at risk, like we can do the, the other buildings at risk, because the sewer plant, we're, we're gonna have subs that are gonna do that, the engineers that are gonna do that analysis for us, and then give you that report at the end of the, at the end of the audit. Any questions?
When you're coming into buildings like this one, for instance, it may not be up to energy code. So, are you finding that, say, us as a village, we're able to just update lighting and not have to bring the whole building up instead of, instead of, and like, I guess, pick and choose? Or typically in a, or a situation like this, are you finding that you're gonna go through, do the study, and if we wanna make these improvements, we're gonna be required to bring everything up to...
Nope, we're gonna look at the, we're gonna look at whatever you want us to look at. So, if you say this building, this roof really needs replacement, we don't have the funding for it, we'll look at, we'll give you pricing on the roof, we'll look at, typically, we always look at lighting, we always look at HVAC and controls. And if we see something that is gonna have a strong payback, we recommend it. So, we're, it's really based on that ROI, on that payback, it's not based on like code. But we will look at those things too. I mean, like, a lot of times ADA compliance can be something that we can help you address and, and help you fund those things through by offsetting it with a, like a low-hanging fruit item, like, like lighting, for example. So, there's a, there's a few different ways that you can pay for this sort of thing. Look at the, the, the end game, the project, which, you know, there's, there's the, the legislation, which is a higher revised code seven-one-seven point zero-two, that allows you to, to basically bundle all these different improvements and do the upgrades over time, pay for them now, and then, and then, or take a loan out to pay for them now, and then pay it back over time with the guaranteed energy savings that, that all of those things are gonna generate over, say, twenty years. The, the other thing that will help you look for through the, the audit is grants. There are a ton of, of grants available right now. There's the, the Ohio Public Works Commission, the OPWC. There's the USDA rural wastewater grant, grants that are available to rural communities. There's EPA grants and, and loans, I mean, there's just a ton that, that I've helped other cities get money for and that I can help look for. And then, you know, in addition, there's the, the infrastructure bill that, you know, may come out, so you have that, you know, shovel-ready job ready to go if those, those dollars end up coming out. It just kinda gives you that proactive approach.
Is there any rebates or incentives from AEP anymore?
I don't think so, at least right now, I know there is not for lighting. And in terms of wastewater, water, I would have to check. But typically, you're gonna, we're gonna do the application for the grants ahead of the project. It'll be a grant dollar, or like a zero-interest loan dollar, but not rebates right now.
What do you think the odds of getting grant money is?
Pretty good, yeah.
Much in line with what Taylor was asking. If we can pick and choose at the sewer plant...
Yep.
Will it be structured to the point where if we say, okay, we wanna do this, we wanna change out the pumps, and we're gonna save this much money, we're not gonna run into the situation where you go, well, if you, if you do that and don't do this, it's fruitless. You're gonna have it...
Yep.
Scheduled out so that we will never run into, if you don't do this, and this, and this, we won't do any good to do this.
Yep, that's, I mean, that's what we always do. We put together an ECM, an energy conservation measures list, and, you know, we'll tell you, like, if you need to do the electrical here in order to do something else, we say, this is dependent on that, you have to do these two items. But other than that, you can do, you know, the lighting and this item, it's, it is definitely all apart menu, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
When you mentioned providing costs for these upgrades, are, so does Energy Optimizers actually perform work? So, did you perform these upgrades, are you contracting these upgrades, or how does that work?
We, we are the, essentially think of us as the general contractor on the upgrades. So, we go out and get bids, we get, we get the subs, we can use local subs that you like, we can, we can bid them against, you know, vetted subcontractors that we often use. And, and then we're gonna ba- basically implement that project turnkey for you. So, there's one person that you, you can come to, there's one person who is responsible for, for the entire outcome of the project.
So, if it's a large-scale project, how does that work if they're acting as a GC? And obviously, that's assuming that we would move forward with the study and everything. Does, do we still have to basically run bids through?
So, there's two ways...
Like advertise for bids and everything, except if you're over the threshold?
Yep, there's two ways to do it, yes, it would be over the threshold. So, what the legislation allows you to do is you can pick an, an energy service provider, an energy service contractor, so that's that GC, that's that single person, who's then gonna get, you know, all the sub, subcontract, and you have the flexibility to help in that process of picking those subcontractors.
Okay.
And so, so you could, you can do the RFQ process for that. You can also do like a design-build, a similar process, a design-build method. And then there's also the OCEPC, which is a, an Ohio-based purchasing co-op that Energy Optimizers has been selected for, that you, where you can do lighting and energy projects, basically, through that. So, if you wanted to bypass the bidding process, that's an option as well.
What if, say, we, we pick something at the sewer plant, and we say, okay, we can, we have the money to do this now, we can't get any grants. You have it just structured as we can't get any grants. Okay, so it's gonna be five years before we can do anything again financially.
Okay.
Are you going to charge us again to re-engineer the situation and re-advice us and...
No, I mean, it would be a new project, so it wouldn't be a new audit, for example. It would just be a new project at that point, yeah.
Do you guys still give out loans, go through the loan process? Let's say, let's say if it's three hundred thousand dollars to do all the upgrades, and it has a thirty thousand dollar per year payback, like, where you guys do a ten-year, you know, ten-year loan for the...
Yep, we, so...
We pay it off with our own savings?
Yes, we don't, we're not the bank, but we can, we work with a lot of municipal advisors who can bid that out and get you the best bank, basically, to finance it, and get you the best interest rate. And then, the legisla-, they understand the legislation, we've done this many times with, like, different banks. And they will give you the loan, you pay for the project, and then you, sorry. They give you the loan, pay for the project, and then we measure and verify those savings over, say, ten years, or fifteen years, whatever, whatever the term is, so that you can see that the dollars that you are currently right now paying to AEP, you're no longer paying on your utility spend, you're just diverting those dollars to pay back the cost of the upgrades, so it's budget.
Yeah, we did that, we did that at the school, and then we were able to pay it off early without any kind of fee or anything.
Yes, because we usually always underestimate the savings, and so you're gonna overachieve those savings, and yeah, pay it off, that's, that's awesome.
So, you're essentially, you're gonna guarantee to the bank, whoever we go with it, that we can pay this off just a few savings?
They unders-, yep, we guarantee it to you, and the bank understands it, because we've done this with them. The legislation has been in place for a long, long time in Ohio.
So, if we press go, like, next council meeting, say we pass it with emergency, what's the, what is your guys' estimated time to do the entire study?
To do the study, we could get started right away, and it will probably take a week, maybe two, on, of, to different times, coming back and forth on site. And then, I'd say about four weeks to turn around the report, four to six weeks to turn around the report.
Okay, we're getting ready to start our budgeting process, that's the only reason I ask.
Okay.
Obviously, there's gonna be some capital expenses, assuming that there's gonna be some upgrades that we're gonna need to make.
Yep.
So, okay.
The price was twenty-two-five, right?
Yes.
Is that something we have to budget, Cheryl, for next year? Can we do it, if they decide to do it? She's the money lady. Would it be best to...
So, you can always find the money. Quick question, is all of that money due upfront, is a hundred percent due upfront?
I think it's like over, it's like thirty, it's like a third, a third, a third, or something like that.
I'm guessing it could come out, if they decide to do this, come out the sewer fund? No?
Only if we're doing the sewer. If you're doing other buildings.
Which plans are split in, plans are split in...
Okay.
So, I, there, we're gonna be having a finance meeting, finance meeting here, the finance committee meeting here, probably the next week here, so we can discuss all that.
Okay.
Follow up on that.
All right.
And one thing that sort of goes with that is the cost for this is really for the sewer plant. The rest of it is, you know, kind of at, we do at risk, if that makes sense, the, the, the general fund buildings, so.
And that's how it was presented to us in the meeting, was, was sewer plant only, and then she, she and, what was his name?
Dave.
Dave graciously said, well, you know, as, as we added on, you know, what about our police station? What about our swimming pool? And as they graciously added them on, it just went, and we'll do, we'll throw it in for that number.
Yep, if you guys wanted to forget the sewer plant and just do an audit of those buildings, we would do that at no cost.
So, yeah, the water sewer has listened to her, and they want her to come, explain it to everybody, so everybody's on the same page. So, any other questions? Okay, thank you for...
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Have a safe trip home.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, before you, the approval council meeting minutes, August the second. Any additions or corrections? If not, entertain a motion to...
Make a motion, accept the minutes.
Second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Klepper.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Then approval of August the eleventh, eleventh, special council meeting minutes.
I make a motion, Bassett, right?
Second.
Roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
I'm staying.
Beverly.
Yes.
Klepper.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Okay, you have before you the bills since our last meeting, any questions?
The Hicksville Rotary, Hicks TV Membership, five-seventy-one.
Bill Murphy. belongs to Rotary. Paid from Hicks TV.
That's what the dues are for the Rotary?
For the whole year.
Well, no wonder I don't belong to them.
That's Mills. That, just to be, to know, that comes out of the fees from, doesn't come from taxpayers, it's the fees. The subscribers pay the media comps, so it's all through that. That's Mills and dues and everything.
Okay, any other questions?
Read the bills.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Barth.
I'm staying.
Klepper.
Yes.
Boards and commissions, planning commission met August the fifth, minutes are in the packet. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, council committee reports.
There's no meetings.
There's no reports, there's none, nobody met?
We met just before this meeting, the street lighting property, in regards to a question. Cory had a question, the three parking spaces that are over in front of Gary Shaw's house. Cory thought possibly we could do away with those three as far as, as mobile vehicle parking. Strip it off and put loading and unloading zone there, so that the trucks that set up on the intersection could pull down there and be off the road and out of the way. The three members looked, we got professional advice from a store owner on the corner, and we got with, I talked with Gary Shaw Saturday morning. Gary didn't care what we did out there, but he's gonna have to trim some trees. Tonight when we met, the three of us decided that we don't wanna lose those parking spaces. Trucks aren't really there that long, we haven't had any accidents, let's leave it alone.
Okay.
And just throw it out there, police, fire, and EMS are gonna meet August nineteenth at five-thirty here in council chambers.
August nineteenth with just Thursday at five-thirty?
Yes.
Okay, in here?
Yes.
Okay, any other committee?
Schedule a finance meeting. Yeah, we'll, we'll schedule a finance committee meeting this week, so.
Okay.
Let's not say yet.
Not this week.
Not yet, not, not, oh, you're in...
Texas.
Texas, tomorrow, right?
Okay, administrators report, Cory.
Uh, I didn't actually have a written report, just a couple things. Ho and Brink finally finished up the water line install out there on West High Street. Hopefully about two more days, weather, weather pending, they'll finish up the storm line that they're doing right now. They will have to cut across West High Street, so traffic could be an issue. We're hoping not to shut it, shut the entire street down, we're hoping we can just do one side at a time. I told them that the semis, we can't detour the semis. They are done doing that out there, so they're gonna allow the semis to go through, so they can allow semis, we'll just allow regular traffic to go through, so people are, have to be patient. Then I wanted to remind people, the new Whirler recycling schedule will start September twenty-second.
Any idea when they're gonna start cleaning up on Chicago?
The restoration, yeah. Nick Ho and Brink said it'd be about four days to do this storm line that they're doing. And then right after that, they'll start right into the restoration.
I was out through there today, I hope when you guys do your walkthrough and, and arrive at your punch list, I hope you may come raise those sketch spaces. They are way too deep, especially the one in front of the PD. That must, that thing must be four foot in the ground.
Okay, any other questions for Cory?
With the Whirler, they send out anything? I thought they were gonna send out a mail or something.
It'll be, it'll be on, on the bills, on the water bill.
The utility and water bill, okay.
But I thought we requested the Whirler send us, send out something.
Well, I think we said that they go with the water bills.
Okay. That was all we were gonna do.
As far as I know.
Okay, okay. I'm staying.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thanks Cory. Troy, solicitors report.
First thing I have is ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash twelve, first reading by caption only, an ordinance amending section nine twenty-one point zero-one of the codified ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio regarding curb and road excavation. That's just what was talked about at the last meeting that the committee got around, and the only thing that really changed is in the section that talks about the repair work that has to be done. I think it's E, D and E are the only two things that changed, the rest of the stuff is identical. And then I had a question for Cheryl, do we need to do twenty-twenty-one fourteen if we, if we don't have any weeds?
No.
We're not gonna do twenty-twenty-one fourteen, apparently, there's no delinquent weeds or grass for us to certify. So, first reading of twenty-twenty-one dash fifteen by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio directing the Defiance County Auditor to assess and enter the delinquent water and sewer bills on the tax duplicate of the properties described in exhibit A and declaring an emergency.
Make a motion. Go ahead, Mike.
Oh, you go ahead.
Somebody doing it.
Okay, I did, Cheryl.
I got him.
You suspended the rules, right?
Yes.
Okay, second? Okay, roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Klepper.
Yes.
The second and third readings, a resolution two thousand twenty-one dash fifteen by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio directing the Defiance County Auditor to assess and enter the delinquent water and sewer bills on the tax duplicate of the properties described in exhibit A. of the properties described in exhibit A and declaring an emergency.
So move.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly? Klepper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Next is a first reading, a resolution two thousand twenty-one dash sixteen by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio directing the Defiance County Auditor to assess and enter the delinquent sidewalk repair bills on the tax duplicate of the properties described in exhibit A and declaring an emergency.
I didn't get in exhibit A.
It was on the desk.
Here.
Okay.
Do we have sidewalks?
It's on there. Oh, it's a walk.
I haven't seen your sidewalk being fixed.
These are already been done, correct? I make a motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Roll call.
I'm confused because it says uh we're doing sidewalk repairs and this says long mode of property.
Yeah.
Sewer, it says S W.
S W sidewalk.
It's code over on the right.
Trash pickup is.
S W is for sidewalks. Yeah, didn't have any grass. Um Klepper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Second, third readings, a resolution twenty-twenty-one dash sixteen by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio directing the Defiance County Auditor to assess and enter the delinquent sidewalk repair bills on the tax duplicate of the properties described in exhibit A and declaring an emergency.
I, I so move.
Second.
Roll call.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Next, resolution twenty-twenty-one dash seventeen, first reading by caption only, a resolution to assess streetlight millage and declaring an emergency.
Make a motion to suspend rules.
Second.
Okay, is this the same rate or up or down?
Same.
Down?
No, just the same.
Okay.
Same as last year.
Okay, roll call.
Barth?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Second, third readings, a resolution twenty-twenty-one dash seventeen by caption only, a resolution to assess streetlight millage and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Beverly?
Yep.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Next is resolution twenty-twenty-one dash eighteen, a first reading by caption only, a resolution entered into an agreement with the Defiance County Commissioners for the recovery of monies expended for providing legal counsel to indigent persons for the calendar year twenty-twenty-two. And the first reading of resolution twenty-twenty-one dash nineteen by caption only, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the village of Hicksville to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission state capital improvement and or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency.
Is this due to a timeline or something?
Yes, this is the, I think this is the project that, the new money that we talked about, that's gotta be.
Yes. Oh, it's not.
Oh, additional funding.
So move, suspend rules.
Second.
Roll call.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Second, third readings, a resolution twenty-twenty-one dash nineteen by caption only, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the village of Hicksville to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission state capital improvement and or local transportation program programs and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And resolution twenty-twenty-one dash twenty, first reading by caption only, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. I think, this needs to be an emergency.
Make a motion to suspend.
Second.
Roll call.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Klepper?
Is this an increase?
I have eight, uh nineteen and twenty here, if you wanna see, it's gone up a little bit. And twenty um for the villages, a hundred twenty-nine-one, and it's a hundred and forty-three now, so it's a little bit.
Okay, yes.
We're at, we're a stop, Martin?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
So second, third readings, a resolution twenty-twenty-one dash twenty by caption only, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission authorizing necessary tax levies certifying them to the county auditor.
It's a move.
Second.
Roll call.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
That's all I have. Anybody got any other questions for Troy?
Thanks Troy.
Oh, I, I was gonna bring up about the house, the lot, Arthur and Main Street, is that? What's the, we need to get moving on that?
Yes.
If we decide to sell, right?
Yes.
We already.
A while ago.
We just need to do, I mean, we're gonna do an auction, and we just need to do a resolution and somebody to auction it off.
Can we, we can't sell the private treaty, can we? So we have to do an auction.
So we can't do sealed bids, gotta do an auction.
You have to, I mean, you could do sealed bids theoretically, I mean, it's gotta be advertised and.
So that.
Same way as the Haverhill behind there.
Wouldn't have to pay a fee then if we do sealed bids, right?
Oh, yeah. As on. Well, that's just, that's, yeah, that's just.
The only other thing you could do, and I don't know, I know the, I bought dozers from Defiance County landfill, when they open the bids, if you're there, you can bid again, you can continue.
Oh, yeah.
But you have to be there, you can't phone in or nothing.
Well, we can decide, but I'd just like to see that. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, that's all we have for us.
Okay.
Pass the resolution and there you go.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Troy? Okay, department heads, police chief?
Uh I have nothing unless you have a question.
Got a nice beep, bud.
Okay.
That's a comment.
Alex, you have the new officer here, how's things going with the new officer?
Great.
Like the town, pretty smooth, no problem.
So you started this week?
Last.
Last week?
So she's worked three days. Worked three days, thought she had to have two offs.
Fire and EMS?
Nothing unless you have questions.
You like any questions for the fire chief?
Why is the sky blue?
The, you still working on C P O township?
Yeah. Discuss it.
Okay.
How many ambulances you got?
Irrelevant.
Two and a half.
Any luck on applicants?
No, we've had a few pickup applications and haven't got anything back yet.
So the EMS side you're reporting, I don't see anybody from, no report right now, okay. Park director, I thought I saw her. So anybody got anything on the park?
We have a park, we're meeting Wednesday night, I believe, yes, this coming Wednesday, so we're gonna meet.
Full close?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
August fifteenth.
That's today, isn't it? Yesterday.
She didn't mention that.
I saw it in here somewhere.
And they got the leak fixed, I understand, so.
Yeah, within the bills.
All right.
Did they get a quote on the liner for next year?
I haven't heard yet.
Fix to then.
Okay. Cheryl, fiscal officer report.
Yeah, it's short and sweet tonight, all you have is your fund status, and you have the cash summary fund by fund for the month of August to show the revenue that um has come in, kinda small, the expenditures have gone out kinda big.
Any questions for Cheryl? Okay.
Bottom lines look better.
Bottom line isn't very good.
It looks a lot better than it was though.
That's because it's, it's inflated by government money, it's not our money.
It is once we spend it, right?
I'm waiting for suggestions.
I need my road paved.
Man, that's a, that doesn't count.
Sorry, don't qualify.
Make sure, make sure we use all that money, I think it's thirty-eight thousand?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand?
Can you remind me again of the date?
December thirty-first.
December thirty-first.
It's gotta be gone by then. I bet we could dream something of.
Okay, um mayor's report, the next meeting will be the day after Labor Day, which would be the seventh, Tuesday. Trick or treat night, I'm gonna set the date.
Ooh, already?
Already, I don't mess around.
I like it.
Yeah.
October thirty-first, a lot of people's asked.
Wait, that's on a Sunday.
Saturday, thirtieth maybe, okay. Thirtieth, sorry, Ms. Brent. Thirtieth, Saturday, so I've had two or three people ask me, and I said, okay, I'll announce it. This Saturday, uh Saint Michael's Catholic Church has gone a hundred and forty-year origin of the, original of the parish and a hundred years ago laying of the cornerstone of the original church, and that's this Saturday, there's a mass at four P M. So congratulations to Saint Mike.
Oh, yeah.
So trick or treat hours.
Yeah.
I don't set the hours.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you do, you did last year.
Okay, what is the hours?
You went four to six.
Four to six or five to seven?
Yeah.
I think it was four to six last time.
What, what do you wish?
I was kidding, we should go big.
Four to six?
Yeah.
I think it's better just 'cause of the.
Daylight.
When it starts to get dark.
Okay, you want four to six?
Yes.
Well, that would be my vote, but it doesn't.
Four to six, that is, okay.
That's my year's recommendation.
Oh, yeah, urban idea.
Fair's coming to town, mayor.
Oh, yeah.
Saturday.
Where's this summer go?
No kid.
And school starts August thirtieth, so be careful, kids will be out walking, riding their bikes to school, so.
And the drags opened to.
The drive will be, yep, open, they have open house, I don't know, I think it's October twenty-second for the new athletic academic complex, I believe is what they said, two to four P M.
First football games this Friday.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Wow.
There's a, isn't there a dinner August twenty-sixth?
Chamber, there's a chamber breakfast, I know at the school.
Yeah.